Beginning our legislative work session, we have been slotted for an hour and a half. Hopefully it won't take that long, but we'll see how conversation goes. I've asked Michael to give us a presentation on several things because actually it's been a while since we've talked legislation. First of all, we've seen a power shift in the state, and so he's going to talk a little bit about that and how that influences education and our work down there. Secondly, he's going to go through the staff input on our legislative program. And finally, he's going to outline the progress we made on our priorities last year. And hopefully at that point, that will lead us into a conversation on our priorities this year. So with that, I will turn it over to Michael, and then please hold your questions on each piece until we get through those. So, go ahead.
All right. In fact, listening to your earlier conversation, it sounds like you'd already started in on some of your legislative conversation, which is a good thing. Definitely is something that's going to dovetail into your work on strategic planning because obviously, you know, a lot of what we do here in the school system, there are a number of folks outside the school system that have a bearing on the kinds of things that we can do and the kinds of resources that we have. I always like, whenever we get into one of these discussions, to set the stage for you, kind of give you a preview of coming attractions, let you know what the climate looks like and what we're looking at going into the next General Assembly session. As Mr. McLeveen mentioned, you did have a fairly seismic shift in Virginia politics. We're going on a couple months ago with a resignation of a Democratic member of the Senate which switched control of that chamber from Democratic to Republican. So now in Virginia, you have both chambers of the General Assembly controlled by Republicans and a Democratic governor. Doesn't change too much in terms of folks agreeing and not agreeing. Obviously, you have changes in political philosophies. One thing that's important to be aware of though, up here especially in Northern Virginia, is that our, every member who represents Fairfax County, who is in the Virginia Senate, there are nine of them that have at least part or all of Fairfax as their constituency, they're all Democrats. So all nine are Democrats. All nine have gone from being in the majority party to the minority party in the Senate. What that means functionally is that a number of them have lost positions of leadership, a number of them have lost positions on, as committee chairs. There's been a fairly significant reshuffling of committee assignments, so some people who were on particular committees have been moved off of them. But it does have kind of a regional flavor to it. Beyond the Rs and Ds and the political philosophy, you do have this shift where almost everybody who represents this area from the Senate was in a position of leadership, or at least was close to a leadership position, and now they won't be. That obviously has a bearing on what the General Assembly does. Something else, I'm sure you're all aware that Delegate Bob Brink resigned, and has, there's been a special election to replace him. Other than, you know, wanting to draw attention and thank him for his service to the Fairfax community, it's important to note that he was the only member of the Fairfax House delegation of our 17 members who had a seat on the House Appropriations Committee. So at this point, that means that of the 22-member House Appropriations Committee, there isn't anyone on that committee who represents Fairfax County. So again, just giving you kind of that regional flavor of Fairfax's representation in various places. Federal elections, you're all very well aware. We have a Senate election coming up, and then the House elections. I am the world's worst prognosticator, but I can actually guarantee you that we will have two new representatives come this, come November. I'm going to go way out on a limb and let you know that, that we will have two new representatives coming in. We had two resignations, or two retirements in the House among Fairfax delegation members. So there are open seats that are up for election. In terms of budget climate, I always wish that I could come up here and sit in the seat and tell you that things are fantastic and that the state coffers are flush, and unfortunately, I'm again in the position of not being able to tell you that. You're all aware that there was a fairly sizable revenue shortfall that was identified a number of months ago, in fact, right about the time that the General Assembly had finalized its budget. The fiscal year '15 deficit has been, has already been resolved, that was taken care of. K-12, direct aid to K-12 education wasn't involved. There were a few things that affect education peripherally. There were some cuts to localities, and obviously, since the vast majority of our funding comes from local sources, that has the potential to have an impact. And also, the Department of Education itself, even though direct aid to school divisions was spared, the department itself did, was subject to the same cuts as other departments at the state level. The reason that's important is because you're hearing increasing talk in Richmond about the State Department's role in a number of different initiatives. SOL innovation, locally-based assessments, a number of things where they're kind of being seen as the clearinghouse and the central repository, and at the same time, they're dealing with further cuts to their staff and to their resources. Fiscal year '16, the General Assembly session coming up, there is about a $500 million deficit that the state has to make up. Unfortunately, with a deficit of that size, that does raise the possibility that K-12 education, direct aid, could be on the table. You can't rule anything out. This is a decision that's made by the General Assembly, obviously during their legislative session. And even though it's a short session, and we call it a non-budget session, they still deal with budget matters, as you will see coming up in fiscal year '16. So there's that for you all to be aware of. And then finally, there's just kind of an informal correlation between resource availability and the interest and the desire of the General Assembly to send mandates to localities. It seems as though when there's fewer resources, there's more of a policy discussion, and policy discussions have the, always have the potential to create new mandates on school divisions and on localities. So that's the, I just wanted to give you the quick 30,000-foot view of the environment in which we're working. You know, as you're all aware, the General Assembly session will start second week in January. 2015, it's a 45-day session. So that's coming very, very quickly. Just to give you an idea, legislators, their pre-filing deadline for their legislation, so if they have legislative ideas that they want to have put in before the session actually starts, their deadline is at the beginning of December. So that's, we're already starting to come upon some significant deadlines at the state Turning to your legislative program, 2014 legislative program, there were a number of changes that you made, some substantive, some were in terms of style. The draft of the 2015 legislative program carries, kind of continues that path of making some changes in terms of the style of the program. One thing that you will notice as you go throughout the entire document is that, it's a long document, I won't sugarcoat it, there's a lot of information, and there's a lot of good information, but there's a lot of dense information. So what we've tried to do this year is we've tried to break out some, or if not all, of those dense paragraphs into a much more kind of bulleted text format. So you'll see throughout that instead of having long paragraphs with a lot of kind of whereas clauses in legislative language, it's broken out a little bit more to try and be a little bit more user-friendly. It's easier for legislators, it's easier for the public to see kind of the specific positions that the board is interested in, or the issues that the board is talking about by going through that format. So when you look through the draft and you kind of take a first read, you're going to see a lot of strike-through, a lot of places where wording, or where stuff is stricken out, stuff is underlined. A lot of that is just stylistic. It's changing phrasing so you can go from a paragraph form into a bulleted form. So I just wanted to let you know that that's kind of the overall flavor of the program. Now what I thought I could do is walk through, I think it's about a baker's dozen of positions that have some relatively significant changes. It just kind of highlights some things that have been updated. A lot of them are updated based just on things that have happened over the last year, different policy priorities, but I'll go through and I'll highlight those. The first position you have is your joint position with the Board of Supervisors. It's the position that you hold jointly with them. Again, it also has shifted to bulleted form. Just as a sidetrack, one of the reasons we're shifting more towards a bulleted form is that the county's already been there. The county did their kind of re-crafting of their legislative program a few years ago, and they really shifted over to bullets. And as they were sending suggestions over to me, it seemed to make sense to carry that through, to align not just the joint position, but also the rest of the program, because it's relevant throughout. In terms of the joint position, really the two probably biggest additions to this are an acknowledgement or desire on the county's part to talk about recognizing differential service needs, and recognizing the different costs there are for different types of services that are provided within the school system. As an example, students who are learning, who are learning English language, they're, the cost per pupil for those students is higher than it is for just a general education student. And that's true across a lot of our special needs populations, is that there's a differential cost in terms of what a general education student, the cost per pupil for a general education student, and then the cost per pupil for students that have these additional service needs. So there's language that's been added into this position that specifically talks to that. Some of that, actually all of that is already covered in your program. There are issues that you've already talked through. The significance of this is that the Board of Supervisors is picking up on the same issue as well, and joining in all that conversation. And then a second, it's a little bit more of a stylistic change, but it is, it's important, given some of the language that we see coming, particularly from the administration, is the link between investments in K-12 education and economic development. Obviously, there's still a very significant jobs focused on, at the state level, both in terms of job creation, but also in terms of training workforce and training students to be prepared for the workforce. So there's just a little bit more language to align those two concepts within that position. I'm going to skip you forward, and I apologize by the way, Mrs. Smith pointed out to me that I gave you the hard-to-follow version, because I inadvertently left page numbers off of the draft. And she told me this, not quite timely enough to get it changed for you for today, but what I'll do is I'll just reference this specific position and try and navigate you that direction. And I promise there will be page numbers on the document from now on. So I'm going to skip you forward to some language change on the college admissions You've had a longstanding position, it's often colloquially referred to as the Dream Act, in terms of undocumented students' ability to both attend higher education in Virginia, but also to receive in-state tuition. The Attorney General actually made a ruling that expanded eligibility for that tuition, the in-state tuition, to undocumented students in Virginia, which is largely in line with the position that you have in terms of what's in the legislative program. What this position does is this position adds in some very specific technical wording about deferred action for childhood arrivals, which is a specific program that these children can be deemed eligible under, just to kind of flesh out the more general language in there that talks about which types of students should be eligible for these, for that tuition benefit. So I wanted to draw your attention to that. And the reason that that language stays there is because the change that was made was made by an Attorney General's ruling, and that wasn't made in code, it wasn't made by legislation. So there's still a chance that, you know, the Attorney General would have a different interpretation. So I think that the board's position, should it be your desire to continue down that path, is still appropriate to keep in there. On the, under "cost of competing," which is the bottom of what I have as page four, the language that's added there is actually an acknowledgement of something that happened during the last General Assembly session, which was, over the past few years, the General Assembly has been slowly whittling away at a differential that was provided to jurisdictions in Northern Virginia to help account for the difference in how difficult it was to recruit and retain employees, but also the differences in cost of living. It's referred to as "cost of competing," and there is a differential, at the state level, there's a differential for both teachers and for support personnel. The teacher differential's never changed, and really has never been subject of discussion, but the support side differential has been a point of discussion, and there have been cuts made to that over time. And this past General Assembly session kind of finalized the path that the General Assembly was on, and completely eliminated the funding for that. It does have a differential impact. It has an impact on Northern Virginia and no other jurisdictions, because we were the only ones that were actually receiving it. But I wanted to make sure that it's highlighted. It's also highlighted in the joint position. The joint position had talked about "cost of competing" in the past and opposed the cuts that were being made, so obviously, it's now shifted to talking about trying to reinstate that funding. Under "education funding state," there's a couple of things I wanted to highlight for you. One is, we have some very specific language in here advocating for funding that's predicated on high growth. Obviously, Fairfax, we continue to grow as a school division. We may not grow as a, on a percentage basis as much as a number of other school divisions, but when you start looking at the absolute numbers of students that come into our school division, we grow by a school division, you know, by some of the smaller school divisions in Virginia, every single year. So I think just an acknowledgement of that mechanism for the state, and also to encourage the state to include those kinds of measures in some of their funding formulas. The second thing that I wanted to point out, under "education funding state," and this is a more general conversation piece, I guess you'd call it, is you will often hear the term, and it's used in here, and everybody uses it, "fully funding the standards of quality." That term is used all the time, that it is, the standards of quality are not fully funded, the standards of quality are fully funded. How are the standards of quality funded? People use that terminology all the time. But I think it's important to distinguish between kind of two concepts that underlie that. One is a question of, okay, say the formulas are exactly the way they are now. They measure teacher salaries, they measure all the input costs that go into what it costs school divisions to run a school division, and then that gets filtered up into state formulas so that the state has their contribution. So the first component of this really is a question of accuracy. This is the point at which your eyes will glaze over, because I will throw out the term "linear weighted average." But, and I'm glad I get a laugh or two, because linear weighted averages is actually a statistical methodology that the state uses. Instead of actually going and measuring teacher salaries and averaging it across every teacher in Virginia, there's a very elaborate and complex mechanism that they use where they take the average for each individual school division, and then they weight each individual school division by how far they are from kind of the median, or the center of the distribution. So if you arrayed average teacher salaries from the very lowest to the very highest, the methodology is designed to overweight those that are right in the middle and underweight those that are on the ends. Now, in Fairfax, we would be one of the ones that would be on the end, and one of the ones that would be on the higher end. We would have a fairly significant impact on the actual statewide average. So the state uses this linear weighted average, so it's, it kind of mutes the effect of the real highs and the real lows. This is where the question of accuracy comes in. Yes, the state can say that they are fully funding the standards of quality based on that methodology, but how accurate is it? Is it accurately measuring the costs that you all face as a board, and that the Board of Supervisors faces, and everybody else on the ground actually faces when we have to set teacher salaries? Or is it helping to mute the impact that this might have at the state level? So that's one component of this, our standards of quality fully funded, is, okay, even if you acknowledge, or even if you accept that the formula's the way they are, are you accurately measuring the input costs that go in? The second question-
Is that by district or is it by total numbers of teachers? What is that?
Well, I actually simplified the process. What they, in fact, what they do is each individual school division is counted as a single data point. So a school division that has, oh, say, 20,000 teachers, or, you know, has a very large number of teachers, is counted exactly the same way as a school division that has a small number of teachers. So in essence, because we are on the top end of both of those metrics, we have a lot of teachers, and the salaries are relatively high compared to the rest of the state's average, we're undercounted twice within the formula, because our size is muted, but also the impact that the actual dollar amount that goes into the formula is muted. So that's where the accuracy of the standards of quality piece comes in. The other piece of the standards of quality discussion, and whether or not they're fully funded, gets to the issue of adequacy, is are the standards of quality as they're drawn up now adequate, and do they accurate, or do they adequately reflect what school divisions actually have to do? State funding for ESL teachers is the prime example that I always use. The ratio that the state funds based on is roughly, funds roughly a 60 to 1 student-to-teacher ratio for students that receive ESL services. And obviously, that's not how school divisions run their classrooms. They're staffed more on closer to 30 or below. So there's a significant disconnect between what the standards of quality actually say and what the standards of quality should say to accurately reflect, and to adequately reflect what the, what individual localities are doing. So those, I just wanted to kind of go off on that tangent, because I get asked that question all the time about fully funding the standards of quality, and how do we fully fund the standards of quality? And I just want us to be careful that there are really two underlying concepts, and your conversation is a little different depending on which of those two concepts you're focusing on, on those two. So there's language, it's subtle, but there's language in the education funding state position, but also in the standards of quality position that tries to pick up on this concept of accuracy versus adequacy, and how the two of them kind of come together. Okay, on, under "educational technology," this is on page seven, there's one important addition. There's been a lot of discussion at the state level about broadband connectivity, not just connectivity at the school level, but also connectivity student by student. This language is broadened a little bit to bring in the state's role in providing those kinds of connectivity services. A lot of the discussion at the state level has very much put the onus on localities and on school divisions. And this is, this is trying to bring the state back into that conversation, that this is a statewide issue, not just an issue for localities and for school divisions and school boards to have to address. Okay, I'm going to skip you ahead to the English language learners' position on page nine. And there's a new bullet here, and the concept behind this bullet point is, under Nochalep Hein and under other accountability systems, you have subgroups. Subgroups are measured in terms of who's eligible for the, for particular services, or who fits in under particular categories, and who has particular characteristics. The English language learner subgroup is rather unique in that students actually exit that category. Once they are successful in language acquisition, they're actually no longer counted under the English language learners' subgroup. So what you've done is you've essentially created a subgroup where you're not rewarding success, you're not rewarding successfully moving students on to language proficiency, and you're always picking up the students that are new to the country, who are just coming in at the lower levels. So you've created kind of this conundrum in terms of accountability of you're not, you're not adequately measuring a school division's success in moving students towards English language fluency by dropping those students out once they've actually reached English language fluency. So the concept behind this, that's essentially the concept behind this bullet, is to address that, and to kind of recast that accountability subgroup to account for some of that success, and to give school divisions credit. It goes along with a lot of conversations that the General Assembly and that policymakers have had over the last couple of years about measuring student growth and measuring student progress, and not simply identifying places where school divisions may fall below a particular benchmark, but also celebrating the fact that they are getting students over particular benchmark hurdles. So that's the, that's the general concept behind this change in language, or this additional I will skip you ahead to page 11, and this is under mandates, and this is one of, I know, you all's favorite topics. And simply, the additional language here is just continuing a theme that you've had for the last number of years, which is asking, pleading, cajoling the General Assembly and other policymakers to try as best they can to avoid mandates. And it's not just a matter of unfunded mandates, because technically speaking, you can point to a lot of things where there is a nominal amount of funding, so you can't necessarily say that it's an unfunded mandate, but there are very significantly underfunded mandates. And obviously, the way the state funding formulas work, even a fully funded mandate has a differential impact on a school division like Fairfax, with, you know, both high costs and large numbers of students and large number of teachers than it does in other jurisdictions. So that this, this language, again, just kind of fleshes out that concept of avoiding mandates wherever possible. And then at the end, there's a plea, at least, to, if a General Assembly member, or if there is a consideration of a mandate, to try and identify places where maybe other mandates could be relaxed. So kind of a one-in-one-out concept of if it's important enough, that's fine, but maybe let's go back and reconsider some of the previous mandates that we've placed, and see if there are, you know, there are resources that can be redirected from one to the other. Poverty in Student Achievement, which is the next position, the change is actually at the very end of the position, so it's on the next page, on page 12. And this, this just expands on a position that you all adopted last year in terms of addressing poverty, not just at the school division level, but also at the community level. And this talks a little bit about strategic planning across, kind of, across functional lines, I guess you'd call it, and pulls in a little broader discussion about poverty and not just have it limited to poverty as it comes to the schoolhouse, but also poverty as it is in the community. The next position is, actually, this is more just a change in wording. The position was a little bit behind the times and was using some terminology that is kind of dropped out of the lexicon. I referred to remedial education, and it's, I think a more accurate way to describe those types of programs is early intervention and remediation. So it's just a recommendation to change the position title, but also the wording within the position to reflect that, that new terminology. All right. I will skip you ahead to pages 14 through 16, which is the Standards of Accreditation and Standards of Learning Position.
Michael, do you mind if I ask a real quick question on that?
Absolutely.
On the, I'm trying to encourage us all not to word spits so much, but here, I'm going to do the very same thing. On the remedial or remediation, you know, that, it's important that this document connotes what people, I mean, communicates, and uses the terminology that people understand, but that is an antiquated term. Most school systems are going to acceleration to help people catch up, right? Which is more positive. But I also wouldn't want to encourage us to use that term if it didn't mean anything to anyone. So I just, I'm just kind of wanted to put it out there. So you think if we keep- So you think if we keep the term, that would probably convey the way it is right now?
I think, I'm not sure that the, I'm not sure that the state of the art has caught up at the state level.
Okay, that's a good point.
So I think if, if we use the term acceleration, it would be a great, it'd actually be a great educational piece for us to, you know, kind of update their language, but I, I do think that they're still focused on, it's not just remediation, it's early intervention and remediation, but I think that, that we'll continue that evolution of that wording. Okay, so standards of accreditation and standards of learning. This is really kind of the meat of, of where, where the most significant changes are coming from, in part because this is, this is the, the topic that the General Assembly has been focused on for at, at least a year, going on a year, and they're continuing discussions of standards of learning, standards of accreditation, how you measure how successful a school division is, how you measure how successful individual students are, testing. All those issues are kind of part and parcel of this position. So I'll just, I'll highlight a couple of additions. One is a new paragraph asking for better alignment between state accreditation and federal accountability expectations. When you look at how the federal government measures accountability versus how the state measures accountability, there's fairly significant differences between the two in terms of what's counted, what's not counted, what tests are important, what, you know, what the terminology is, there's just a lot of disconnect between those two. You can also make the same argument that at the state level, there are disconnects between various measures that they have of, of accountability. But I think is, is kind of a starting point to get state accreditation, federal accountability in the same, talking about the same things. Now, the federal accountability piece, of course, I skipped over that position, but you do have a position on ESEA reauthorization, which I will again report to you has not been done at the state level or at the federal level. I've lost track, I think it might be seven years overdue. It is fairly significantly overdue, but that, and, and, you know, the, the federal government and especially the administration have been taking a very piecemeal approach to waivers and allowing states to do various things and giving them various permissions to do things. But at the end of the day, that legislation and that code section still exists at the federal level. And if they were not, if the administration were not granting waivers to school divisions, a school division or a state would revert right back to what Nochala Behind says, which actually, we have now reached the threshold of you have to have 100% of your students in all of your schools meeting adequately progress. So you'd be sending a lot of letters saying that your schools were not meeting adequate yearly progress if they weren't all to 100% at this point. Be that as it may, there still is an important conversation to be had about state accountability, federal accountability, and what goes into an accountability system. And this kind of tries to bring that, that, that position up and... Okay, the next change is we had a, a section that was added last year that referred to 21st century skills. You all have, in many ways, reworded that for me and by, by going through your, the process of adopting Portrait of a Graduate. And so what I've tried to do is I've tried to pull the language from Portrait of a Graduate and the important skills that were identified there and how it's worded in Portrait of a Graduate, pull that into the legislative program and the legislative position. So there's just closer alignment between various documents that people will see and make sure that everybody knows we are talking about the same things in terms of these skills and the, the things that we want our students to know once they, once they graduate from, from FCPS. You had an existing position that talked about expanded and simplified opportunities to make use of substitute SOL assessments. The reason that there's additional wording there is because we wanted to clarify that there already are routes to be able to use substitute assessments for individual students, but it is a very, from an administrative standpoint, it's a very time-intensive and individual-student centric approach. It's, it requires very specific hand coding and very specific changes at the building level to translate one score into another. There's no real automated way of doing it and there's no way to, to really deploy the possibility of using substitute tests on a broader basis because it really is individual student by student by student. This is asking, and it, part of it is just an administrative thing from the state's level, but to come up with streamlined mechanisms for us to be able to make use of an authority which we technically already have in terms of substituting assessments for SOL assessments. So that's just a clarification of a position that you already had. And then on page 16, which is the, kind of the third page of the standards of accreditation, standards of learning position, there's a, a lot of new language, which all relates back to the concept of multiple, of pathways to graduation and having multiple pathways for students to earn diplomas. The, the trend at the state level has been to add additional, every time someone comes up with a new idea of something that students need to know, there's now a new graduation requirement. So there's a graduation requirement that a student has to have taken a virtual course. There's a graduation requirement that if you're a standard diploma seeker, you have to have, you have to graduate with a credential in a CTE field. Personal finance is another example that, there've been a lot of additions to graduation requirements, but what that's done is that's limited some of the pathways that students might have in terms of career exploration, looking into different, into different ideas. And in fact, this, this also dovetails into some of the conversations the General Assembly had last year about SOL reform. When the General Assembly went in to last session, SOL reform, they were actually talking about reductions of testing, both at the elementary and the secondary level. The secondary conversation got shelved very quickly because there was a realization that you weren't simply talking about content when you were talking about secondary tests. You were talking about tests that were now linked to a student's graduation requirements. So there are tests that technically may not be required in a Nochala Behind and technically could be dropped, but if you were to drop one of those tests at the state level and not make changes to graduation requirements and not make changes to how a student verifies credits, you could be foreclosing their opportunity to say, for example, get an advanced diploma as opposed to a standard diploma. Because the example that I'm always given is geometry. Geometry oftentimes is used as a student-selected verified credit. It's not so much for the, the math content because they've gone beyond that and they've gone to Algebra II and, and other levels, but that geometry credit does give them a student-selected verified credit. If they don't have that as a possibility, they have to take another class that is tied into a verified credit. And a verified credit has to be a class that has an SOL test attached to it. So you, very quickly, General Assembly kind of set aside secondary because you did have these, these, these connections that needed to be addressed. And I think it's something that the SOL Innovation Commission Committee is, is looking at over time, not just changes to the tests themselves and not just changes to the content, but also changes to accreditation, changes to graduation requirements, changes to student-verified credit. So the language that's here touches on a number of those issues. It's got the generic opening, but it does talk about, and this is an administrative thing that the state could actually do, is increase the number of courses that are listed as, as eligible for, fulfilling graduation requirements. An example I was just recently given is some of our CTE nursing courses. Very significant science content, very significant mathematics content, but it doesn't count towards either science or mathematics as a graduation requirement. Now, there's obviously a debate about whether or not that it's sufficient, but at least it's something that the state could be looking at in terms of do those kinds of courses that have a broader, have a broader CTE base, but also do get into the content level expectations? Is there sufficient alignment for them to be counted as, towards graduation requirements? Student verified credit is another. Student verified credit is, is one of the primary, again, as I was saying with the standards of learning assessment reform, one of the primary impediments to them actually going in and making changes to the assessments because of the way assessments are linked to graduation requirements. So it's somewhere that the state could look to, to provide more flexibility to students, to give them a little bit more, more breathing room, a little bit more leeway in terms of the classes, the courses they do take. And then finally, personal finance is, is a topic that you've talked about extensively. In Fairfax, we have a very robust middle school curriculum in, in personal finance. There are a lot of different ways to approach it, but right now, the really, the, the direct route is a full-year course at the high school level. There could be flexibility in terms of how the state defines the requirements for fulfilling the personal finance graduation requirement. And that, again, could free up another course, which would, again, free up a little bit more in terms of a student's ability to, to take different courses and to do a little bit more career exploration. So that's, that's kind of the intent of that, all that new language there is to pull together some threads, which were kind of implied, but now we're making it a little bit more explicit in terms of pathways to graduation. All right, I promise, I only have a few more to talk to you about. Under student health and wellness, which starts page 18 and page 19, so I'm skipping you ahead a couple of pages. In fact, the change is on the second page of the two, so it would be page 19. As, as you are all aware, the General Assembly over the last number of years has virtually annually sent new health-related mandates down to school divisions, whether it be having EpiPens in every, every classroom, whether it be distributing information about eating disorders, whether it be new protocols for students with diabetes, all unassailable and, you know, all definitely ideas that I think everybody agrees with in terms of the policy. But again, they've been presented as mandates and there hasn't been any funding available. There hasn't been, there hasn't been a lot of flexibility in terms of how localities interpret and, and implement these things. So this really is just kind of picking up on that concept, reinforcing what is being said under your mandates position, talking about health, you know, kind of these health-related issues and allowing for a lot of local flexibility. That segues me into a next piece of that, which is specific reference to mental health. I know that's been a focus of this board and I know there's a lot of things that, that you all have been doing. Just so you're aware, there are statewide conversations about mental health going on as well. And a lot of those conversations have to do with possible requirements and possible ideas of requiring local screenings and different things that individual school divisions may have to implement. So it's important to highlight the issue because it is obviously a very important issue to be addressed. But again, it's the kind of thing where if it is addressed, that there should be some degree of flexibility in terms of how school divisions approach it and how they implement some of the programs that might, that might address it. Under student transportation, there are actually two positions that when, when I sent out my request for, for new positions from departments, facilities, and transportation services asked that two of them be dropped as, you know, either be no longer needed or no longer relevant. One has to do with differential speed limits for school buses. They didn't feel as though that's, that's necessarily an issue anymore. And the second had to do with the eligibility of, of insulin-dependent diabetics as holding commercial driver's licenses. I think the reason that was put in there was because it was during a time of a very acute driver shortage, and this was an attempt to at least find one route to increase the possible pool of eligible drivers. From the information that I've received, that, that need is no longer there in terms of the pool being expanded. Recruitment and retention is much, is much better in terms of getting and retaining drivers. So the, the concept of increasing the pool wasn't, wasn't relevant necessarily anymore. So that's, I think, the reason why that was, that language was recommended for deletion. And then one final change, and this is on the last page, on page 21. And it talks about asking for better alignment between teacher preparation programs and the actual skills and the actual requirements that are placed upon teachers when they reach the classroom. The example that I am given a number, or that I've heard a number of times, and I've heard it as high as members of the State Board of Education talking about it, is we now in Virginia have a requirement that all students take a virtual course, but there's almost no instruction required in terms of teachers, in terms of how they teach a virtual course. So you have this disconnect between new requirements that are being placed on the classroom and on teachers and the training and preparation that they're receiving in order to be able to put those, put those concepts into place. It also is, is there, again, as a way of highlighting the fact that there have been a lot of new requirements that have been placed on teachers and a lot of new mandates and a lot of CPR, CPR training being won in recent years. But again, it's just try and pick up that concept of better alignment between the types of things that teachers are learning as they're coming through teacher preparation programs or as they go through professional development programs and the types of things that they need to have to be successful in the classroom.
Okay, Michael, is that good for this portion? So at this point, I'm going to open up to questions on either the legislative environment or what Michael has gone through thus far. But I do want to lead off with a question. Michael, you had mentioned, obviously, that we no longer have House representation on the House Appropriations Committee. What representation do we have on the Senate Appropriations Committee?
On the Senate Finance Committee, I don't think, we still have Senator Sasselaw and Senator Howell remain on Senate Finance. I believe that Senator Puller had been put on Senate Finance last year and has subsequently been removed because of the, the shift in, in committee seats, but Senators Sasselaw and Howell still are on the Senate Finance Committee. Senate Finance is the analog to the House Appropriations Committee, they just use slightly different terms.
Right, thank you, Michael. Okay, so I have first Sandy followed by Kathy.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that thorough report. I had a question, last, last year, we took a step forward by putting our priorities together and you have a list here. Are we going to redo those? Is that going to be part of our conversation today?
Yeah, and that's the next piece. I just want questions right now on what the changes that staff has made.
That's fine, because I think that's, that that's important. A couple of things that are going on, the SOL Innovation Committee, I've been reading about the progress that they've been making and I, I believe, aren't they going to be finished in December? Is that their timeline?
They're not, they're actually not going to be finished. In fact, the, the vision behind the Innovation Committee is that it's going to be an ongoing, an ongoing endeavor. Now, there is, and a, a member of the committee is moving up to the table as we speak.
Oh, good, yes, thank you.
So she can speak to this a little bit more directly. But the idea has been that there would be interim recommendations for the upcoming General Assembly session, but also a much longer discussion because a lot of the change, I think, that people are interested in talking about can't happen between now and January or between now and March. There's a lot of moving pieces and a lot of changes, not just legislatively, but also in terms of regulation and also in terms of, of local capacity. One of the things that we found was with this, the, the first round of SOL reform was in addition to eliminating five assessments at the statewide level, there was a, a parallel requirement to ensure that those, those topics were still being taught and still being assessed. So it's, that's been a shift more towards locally based. We just got a set of guidelines in terms of how we're going to implement that. The discussions that I've heard is that there's hope that local implementation of some of those guidelines is going to help to inform the whole SOL conversation in terms of content, in terms of how it's done, in terms of what an SOL assessment should and can look like. But yeah, so there is a, a short-term goal of having recommendations for the next session.
For the upcoming session.
And then there's going to be ongoing, yeah, ongoing conversations.
And I guess my question then, my follow-up question is, I, you're still in the process now, but would it be possible for this board to get a briefing on, on those recommendations? Because I do think they're critical.
I think so. That's an important piece. I think that it's a two-year committee.
Okay.
So we know that there's some short-term and long-term. We have a, two important elementary and secondary working group next week. And from those smaller working groups, a hope to bring something that will help inform this year's legislation. Have not seen exactly where that's going. We're supposed to get some information. Why it's so important is that, I think Michael would agree that if you participate and you're a journalist sitting there and the reports that you get, it's one version, and then there's some subcommittee work going on in the background at the same time. And I think that's what we need to report to you on because I think there'll need to be some advocacy around that when, when those two working groups are more... some advocacy around that, when, when those two working groups are more concrete, which I expect in the month of October, because I think we're meeting four times between now and the legislation.
Would it be appropriate to get a report from you, or a briefing from you in, say, December? Is that, you know, before the legislature? And I don't know if I need to bring that to a forum, or if we can just say that, you know, we'll, we'll get a briefing at a work session at some point, because I think that's...
Yeah, I mean, I would leave that up to the chair.
Yes, but I think that would be most, most productive. I do. Great, then, and then secondly, you know, I guess, in, in, I see from another one of the reports in here that there's a task force on state mandates, could you give us a little bit of an idea of the scope of that? Is it everything? Is it, you know, from soup to nuts, or is it, is it a narrow?
It is, it actually is a, it's, it's an entity that has existed since the McDonnell administration, in fact, he had a, a group doing exactly the same work, and it was mostly local government officials, there were, it was both a local government component and also a, a school division component that were involved in it, and really, the charge of the committee of this group was to look at mandates and look at significant cost drivers for, for local school divisions and for, for local governments. Now, you can imagine, though, the conversation, that when you get a lot of local government and school division people in the room to talk about mandates, they can agree on a lot of things, that, well, here are things that we shouldn't be done, translating that into action at the General Assembly level, while the General Assembly is the one that put most of those mandates into place, and most of them are there because of a particular, you know, a policy agenda or policy goal, or they're, they're there for a reason, so that commission has not been terribly successful in terms of translating things that they've identified into specific legislative action. One thing that they did accomplish was they were able to streamline a number of the reports that came, that we had to send to the, the Department of Education, so were able to identify a lot of redundancies, particularly between federal reports, state reports, and find places where data was available so that additional reporting didn't have to be done. That group, my understanding is that they've, they've appointed a new set of, of members, Governor McAuliffe has appointed a new set of, of members. I have not seen any information about them actually meeting, however, and I've, I've been looking to see if there have been meetings, and I just haven't seen them, them getting together.
Well, I guess I would be interested in knowing if there, if there's, you know, with this new set, if there's a timeline at all for coming up with, with proposals, and since they haven't been meeting, I guess there's no way to know that.
Well, their timeline has tended to be kind of similar to what the SOL Innovation Committee looks like, is they're a multi-year committee, but they will come up with a set of recommendations prior to the General Assembly session, so by about end of November, early December, if they had recommendations, they would be released at about that time, so that if there was some sort of legislative action that needed to be taken, there would be time to translate it into legislation.
I see, okay.
Okay, Sandy, just let's hold on for go-backs, just so we can make sure.
Could I just ask one more that's related to all of this?
Sure.
And then I'll, I'll save the rest of them.
It's quick, yeah.
And then, on the total English learners, which I think, you know, this new position, is that something that then is going to be considered by the SOL Committee, or have we sent that to the SOL Innovation Committee?
Actually, that would more be under the purview of the State Board of Education and Department of Education, because it has to do with how the accreditation system is set up, and also, there will be issues of alignment between state accreditation and also how No Child Left Behind slash Elementary and Secondary Education Act measures accountability, and whether or not those two are compatible.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, first Dr. Docary, then Kathy.
I just think one thing that is important to keep on your radar about the SOL Innovation, in the committee, we have a lot of small group work, and there are a lot of legislators who sit in those groups, there is a great concern that because there is no new money and they are in cuts, that they don't want to change the assessment framework, because that would mean just passing the cost along to something new, along to local jurisdictions, and we're trying to set the tone that it's okay to set the mark for what we want to do without requirements that it have to be done immediately, it's better to get your framework and your vision, and I think that's just an important thing for you to know as you talk to your colleagues, that, and Stu Robertson, who's the chair of this, is, Steve Staple says, "We're setting the mark for the next 10 years," and if we just decide not to do that because we don't have enough money, then we're cheating our kids, so I think that's just an important legislative perspective to have.
Thank you, Dr. Docary, so Ms. Smith, followed by Ms. McGlocklin.
Thank you, I'm going to bring up the one about the insulin-dependent diabetics. So my understanding from, from reading this is that the U.S. Secretary of Transportation thinks it's fine to do that, but Virginia doesn't have rules to allow it to happen?
Yeah, I don't think that Virginia's ever changed their, the, the rules around the, the commercial driver's licenses to, to match that, and I don't, I, I will be honest with you, at this point, I don't know if that guidance from the federal government is still relevant, just kind of as, as a baseline, I don't know if that is still the stance that's being taken at the federal level, or if that's been updated in any way, shape, or form. It's, it's something that I, I can, I can circle back with Facilities and Transportation and get some more clarification from them in terms of, you know, kind of why, why this is no longer an issue, or why, now, I know it's, it's nothing that's ever gained any traction in terms of discussions with the state in, in that change, but I don't know if, if that's the primary reason for it to be on the, on the cut list, or if it's just a change in, in...
I, I mean, as a parent of somebody with diabetes, I would be curious to know, because if, if there was an ability for standards to be changed to allow this, then I don't have any problems advocating for that change, because, you know, I think if people are able to hold a job like that, then they should be able to have that opportunity, so I would like to know more about it, thank you.
Okay, Ms. McGlocklin, followed by Ms. Schultz.
Thank you, I, I'm not sure if mine is just a very macro-level process question, so I'll just ask it now. I have a copy of last year's legislative program, and I like that this revised draft will have it in bullet form versus narrative form, so I think that's great, but the question that was going through my mind, that I've heard some of our state legislators say in the past, and so again, maybe this is what we're going to go to next, that it'd be really critical that we have like an executive summary, that bullet points, again, the things that we think are most crucial going into this legislative session, because that's my concern, is that they have said, you know, this is all great, but we want to know, not, again, at a global level, but specific to this upcoming legislative session, what are the things that they really want to know? Where's Fairfax County stand on this? Because, and that's like part one of my question, and part two, that you can answer to it now or later, is as things will develop, and I think this happened last year, you know, legislative proposals and things, that we be nimble enough that if Michael and/or Mr. McElveen need this board to weigh in on something, that we do that, because it really, we've talked about wanting to be leaders at the state level, well, guess what? It's early October, so if we don't, if we're not nimble enough to come back and revisit this, whether it's, you know, early January, once the session starts and all of a sudden these things bubble up, then I think we miss our, our opportunity for a voice.
Well, I'll just, just real quick, two things you've put in place over the last couple of years, which are different than what previous boards have done. The first thing is, is that the last couple of years, you have adopted a set of legislative priorities, so it kind of, it takes this document, which is a lot of information, and boils it down to the four or five most important things to the board, and then as subparts of that, talk about some of the specific action items that can come out of each one of those kind of priority areas. I'll let Mr. McElveen address that in, in a second, but the other piece is that the last couple of years, you have had, during the General Assembly session, and actually, we start to see actual pieces of legislation, you have had board work sessions to discuss some of those pieces, and where they don't necessarily fit on the framework of what your legislative program already says, or there are issues that aren't, aren't adequately addressed by this, you have, as a board, have had an opportunity to come back and kind of weigh in on the specifics of House Bill X or Senate Bill Y, more so than just the general language that's contained here in the legislative program.
I, I remember us doing that, so thank you for sort of capturing it, I guess I would just say, one, one added request would be, it's not just if it's something new that we didn't feel was captured in here, but I would say if it's, it's a very powerful, it, you know, substantive issue, that we would really want to make sure that we get behind it, in other words, so it's not just that we've kind of given our, you know, here you go, but that actually, Mr. McElveen and you can elevate something and say, hey, this is going to be a real, you know, tight issue, we're trying to get through the committee, you guys being able to contact your legislators and really weigh in on this, or really put this in front and center and from them, like that would, I would see that allowing us to be even more nimble and more proactive, so that type of communication, I guess, is what I would say I would really value from both of you, as, as things come through, and you want to really spotlight how we can lend our voice beyond just, you know, the traditional lobbying efforts.
So I, I know we both appreciate that, that support, you know, what, what, what hurts us as a board is the, the fact that our meetings are, tend to be spread out, and we usually like to bring something to, to a formal meeting and not call a special meeting to, to discuss something, so we'll continue to have those conversations with the chair and bring it forward as possible. One other thing I would mention, not to repeat anything Michael said, is that we have adopted an accelerated timeline over the past two years for our program, which is why we're dealing it, with it in October, because what would happen previous to, two years ago, is we would adopt a program late November, early December, and the pre-filing deadline for legislators is usually that first week in December, so at that point, they've already figured out, you know, their main pieces of legislation, so this gives us the opportunity to get something to them earlier. And just so you're aware for the timeline, I won't go into it later, this will come up for new business on October 23rd, action on November 6th, and then we have our briefing with the legislators on the evening of November 13th. So is that everything, Ms. McGlocklin? Okay, great, Ms. Schultz, followed by Ms. Dernatko.
So I'm glad that I'm following Ms. McGlocklin, because I want to echo what she's written, and these are identical to my comments last year, which is, what do we support? There is so much up there that navigating that which we've taken a position on and its degree of importance is, is lost, and I, I remember Mr. Velkoff and I somewhat being aligned on this last year, of having a few things that are really important to us being the emphasis of this package, and that if we don't pick a handful, and when I, and when I say handful, I mean fewer than the fingers on one hand, of things that are paramount to us for you to spend your time on down there, and hammering relentlessly the message on those few things, then this is the flak approach, and it's, you know, putting everything in the kitchen sink of everything that we think something about into a legislative package, which is neat in terms of being able to take a position on something, but it is not meaningful in terms of being able to get anything done. And so it lacks a strategic focus, in my opinion, not that it has anything to do with you, it has to do with, once again, you know, we're headed in the direction of putting everything up there, and so how we narrow this down between now and November 6th to the handful of things that we think are important to, to convey to legislators of all ilk, regardless, because we do have people who represent us regardless of their ilk. That being said, I'm going to partially contradict myself in, or, 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 or I'm going to emphasize and take, take this opportunity to advocate for that which should be at the front of this package, are the things that cause us the greatest pain. You know, the, the mandate that the foreign language instructors in elementary school also be certified in elementary education, or the special education certification issues, the things that are causing us tremendous difficulty as a division in terms of doing what we do, which is being made up of people. So things like that, I think, have to be the decision tree of that which we are going to advocate, which can, what can do us the most good. And I'll give you a, for example, and this is potentially, you know, throwing a little fuel on the fire, but we have a DACA support position up there, well, that directly conflicts with our desire to get more money. So we're taking a position on supporting in-state college tuition, on unaccompanied minors or undocumented students, well, if we're going to take a position that they should fund that, we're taking money out of our own pockets. So we need to think very carefully about what we're, what we're advocating for and what we're trying to get them to fund, in terms of what our priorities are, which was the whole work session before this, which are around here. So if it doesn't support one of our priorities, we've got to think about whether or not we invest the time from a legislative perspective in pursuing an advocacy and achieving, achieving it, otherwise, we're going to wind up in the exact same place a year from now.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Schultz, Ms. Dernatko, faxed, followed by Mr. Velkoff.
Thank you, Michael, for this very comprehensive report. I have a question specifically on the local composite index and the funding there, and when you go through this, I see that we've made no substantive changes, but I guess my question to you, and you know, this is one I've been tossing out there for a little while now, just kind of refresh me again where we are on the LCI, and we have in our packet here, the process we have to address is to have a study, is there really any chance of that? And also, what other ways can we, what can we do to elevate this conversation? Because that, that particularly, so, so maybe go back and answer my first question as to where we are and where we are in calculating it, and...
Well, as, as you're aware, the local composite index is the mechanism that the state uses to measure a local jurisdiction's ability to pay. If you were to ask 132 school divisions what they think of the LCI, you'd probably get 135, 136 different answers. The, the biggest challenge with the local composite index is that any, it's, think of it as, as a blanket, you pull one string and it affects every other string. The local composite index inherently creates winners and losers as part of its, as part of its calculation mechanism, so what is very positive for one jurisdiction in terms of a, an isolated change in the local composite index is very detrimental to another jurisdiction. One issue that gets a lot of discussion, that doesn't affect us, but that doesn't impact us as a direct issue, but would have a very significant impact on us in terms of funding that was available, there are a lot of rural jurisdictions that talk about how their land use is valued, and how they have a lot of land that has been put aside in, in conservation, but it is taxed at a cer, or it is, their, their local wealth is measured differently from what their perspective is in terms of the value of that land. Should the General Assembly make that one individual change in one little piece of the local composite index, it would have a ripple effect across every jurisdiction, and it would drive additional funding to the jurisdictions that had a lot of land within conservation easements, and would drive funding away from those that didn't. That's the trick about the local composite index, and I think that's the reason why the board has always taken the position of, if you're going to talk about the local composite index, you have to talk about the local composite index, not a component of it, because every single component, and as, as, as strong an analytical capability as we have, I'm not sure there are too many people on the planet who can tell you what exactly the implications are of changing individual discrete pieces of local composite index are. I, I'm not being purposely evasive, but I'm, I'm just trying to set the, kind of the background of the reason local composite index conversations are always so difficult, is because over the last number of years, we're talking about an environment where we're, where it's limited resources opposed to expansive resources. The only time there have ever really been expanded discussions about how the local composite index measures things is when there has been resources available to hold people harmless, or to make people whole, so if you did make a change in the formula and someone was a loser, they ended up not losing because the state could backfill and say, yeah, we've changed the formula, but you're not going to lose because we've changed the formula, we're just going to drive additional money to another jurisdiction. It's not unsolvable, but that's one of the reasons why local composite index, whenever anybody brings it up, they kind of... anybody brings it up, they kind of dance around it and don't have a really good answer because, and, and we could, we could recommend 10 different changes to local composite index that would immediately get Virginia Beach and Richmond and, and RICO and Prince William and Loudon and every other jurisdiction in Virginia up in arms because we were, we were proposing things that may have an adverse impact on them. I don't know if that answers your question, but that, that gives you the explanation of why the local composite index discussions, whenever they're even attempted, become so difficult so quickly.
Right. I, I get that. And so, but in which way, well, because the LCI is so important to us as, as a portion of state funding and, and because, you know, we are viewed on the aggregate as opposed to what we are individually, we, we, particularly when we ask for a study, you know, we, we do not get taken into account in a very effective way, student demographics, limited English proficiency, all of those things which we have, we have listed. So I guess for me and for my board members whose desire is to be more aggressive in trying to help make these changes happen, and you don't have to answer this now, but, but is there a way to, you know, would, is a study the most efficient way? Like that's, that's a big part of our thing. Or should we be talking about this and taking the study in pieces of this proposed study, which never happens? And, and, you know, looking for various ways to advocate for these changes, so whatever, whatever formulating changes that could or need to be?
Well, I, I should clarify that there actually have been studies. There were a couple of studies, 2001, years before that, that, that were studies of the standards of quality in general, but it talked about the local composite index as a component of that. And there were recommendations were made, there were recommendations to, made that were up, that would update kind of the relative weights that local property and sales tax and local wealth had in the formula itself. Those are still sitting on a shelf. They, they've, they, they were very thorough statistical analyses that would show kind of, you know, that, that you could more closely align the local composite index with the way localities were funding education and their education funding needs, but those didn't go anywhere. There have been a couple of attempts over the past few years, and in fact, last session or the session before, Senator Sasselaw had a study to update that SOQ study, to, to look and say, you know, this is, this is over 10 years old, some of these things are still relevant, some of them are not, let's take a look. That study was originally supposed to just update the standard of quality through J-LARC. What it became was it became a spending efficiency study. So it actually, the original proposal to look at the standard of quality in general became a study of the state efficiency review program and how efficiently school divisions are spending their funding. So it's been proposed and the study concept has been refloated, it just got, as part of the legislative process, got changed into something different. It's certainly something that can be brought back, but as I said, since they, you know, they did set this study up a couple of years ago...
Well, I, I guess then, you know, and this will be a topic for further conversation as we move through this process, but even calling then upon, you know, them to take action upon this study rather than another comprehensive study or something, you know, it's, it, to me, it's, it's an easy deflection point for a local funding body to continually turn to the LCI. And so I think we need to talk about it in terms of any substantive changes we can make to the formula itself to help address our issues that are growing in this county because looking at us as an aggregate is no longer beneficial.
And I, I think just in terms of language that we've already talked a little bit about, that distinction between accuracy in how things are measured versus adequacy of whether or not they're appropriately funded, that may be a helpful lens to look at that question through, is are we accurately measuring a locality's ability to pay? So are we taking what is there already and accurately measuring it versus is it an adequate measure? That, that may be a kind of a new, or a little bit different nuance to take towards that that may change the conversation a little bit.
Okay.
Ms. Darnatt-Cofax, we'll, we'll have further discussion about that probably with Michael and whatnot. Thank you. Mr. Velkoff, followed by Ms. Hines.
Thank you, Mr. McElveen. So I, I know that, I, I saw that we and the Board of Supervisors have a joint position about the increased cost of students with certain characteristics in terms of second language and effective poverty and so forth. I don't believe we have, I want to verify this, I don't think we have anything that actually goes to the federal government and thus the federal government say for impact aid of the additional costs of absorbing undocumented children, for instance.
We actually, you, you act, the, under Education Funding Federal, there actually are references to full funding for special education, so full funding under IDEA, the idea of the 40% split, which has never come close to 20%. Impact aid is included in there in terms of adequacy of funding and, and the, the funding that comes back for federally connected students, and I think that the...
So you think we're covered there?
I, I think that it's, it is addressed. I don't know if it's addressed explicitly enough for what you're talking about, but I would say that the federal education funding position does pick up those particular pieces.
Okay. I had, I wanted to pick up on a point, I was, I learned about this from Dr. Dockery, about the alternative assessments at the high school level where there's this burdensome process for using AP and IB scores instead of SOLs. And I was, I saw that we have, that it's mentioned in the position. My concern is that it's perhaps buried in there. And is this potentially a, a little nugget that we could pull out? Is this, is this potentially low-hanging fruit for the General Assembly to, to grab onto and provide a little relief to us?
Dr. Dockery's return to the table, so I'll let her...
So I think it's a really important point because right now, we only have about 3,000 students that we substitute AP, IB for an SOL and of course. And Kathy Oliver estimates that it could be three to four times that if we could upload a file instead of individual, because right now, she doesn't even advertise widely because we don't, the state has to do a one-to-one upload. And so that's for the schools that come to her, we do that file. We have mentioned it to Steve Staples when he was up here meeting with you all, and I think it's a very important technical piece that needs to be fixed at the state level.
So we're talking potentially above 10,000 tests, SOL tests that are given that could be eliminated. So I'm going to suggest that we give serious consideration to elevating this as one of our priorities.
And there is this line between you have to take that test before the SOLs, and so there's some schools that do both because they want to guarantee that the student gets that credit, but there is still enough to be gained.
Okay. And then my, my final point, Mr. McElveen.
And just real quick, that's, would that be legislative or VBOE for that piece?
It would fall, it would fall under the same rubric. You have, you have a lot of positions in here that have more of a VBOE, VDOE focus than a legislative focus. So I think it's, it's still appropriate. And it also, it very appropriately fits under a, the, the reform of standards of learning assessment priority position that you had adopted last year. That could very easily be a subtopic under, under that if that's something that the board wanted to continue as, as a priority of the SOL reform.
Okay.
And then finally, I just want to say, Dr. Garza, we've had discussions about assessments. I'd just like to express my personal view that we be bold as we go forward. This ties together this morning's discussion. And while we want to bring the Commonwealth forward, I just want to say, I hope we're not limited. I hope you don't feel limited by whatever the Commonwealth is doing. And I will certainly do, if it becomes necessary, to defy the constraints of the Commonwealth. I will do my best to convince enough colleagues on the board to back us up on that, on that point.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Velkoff. We have Ms. Hines, Ms. Reed, then we have a go back, and I just want to remind you, we were allotted until 4:45 and we have a whole nother section to go through about priorities. So please keep it as short as possible. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Velkoff. I look forward to your MSNBC appearance on that issue, actually. So, and I, I was running late, so I apologize. If, if you've already said what I'm going to ask you, we can take it offline. We don't have to spend everyone's time, but thank you. Couple of questions, just sort of logistical. If I have one of my legislators who is ready to help with something, you know, has already said, yes, I want to help, but I'm not sure, he's not quite sure how to, what's for us, you know, what do we do next? So we come to you and say, you know...
Talk, talk to myself, talk to Mr. McElveen, talk to the chair, and we can, we can definitely, depending on what they're interested in pursuing, we can definitely give them multiple ideas, either for budget amendments or for legislation that would address issues that are in the program.
Okay, great. Because sometimes it's just a matter of helping them with language to know exactly what it is to propose. Awesome. Okay. Getting back to the SOL Reform Committee, too. Dr. Dockery, you were talking about how, you know, they're, they're looking at reforms, at the cost of the reforms and wondering if they should even propose them because they're expensive. I wonder if anywhere in that conversation, they talk about what we have tried to talk about, which is before you add something, you take other things away. So do they, is anywhere, do we talk about the costs of SOL tests and just the amount of money that the state is spending on, you know?
They captured the amount from what they cut for these, this year's and already put it towards their deficit. So the amount of savings that you would get from the third, fifth, they use to balance their budget.
Oh, okay. So that's how that's going. Okay.
May I add to that? It's interesting discussion because they, they see it, I mean, when they talk about changing the system, it's all within the current framework. So the same language is being used, and so it's just kind of a tweaking here and tweaking there. So I think our next legislative program, once we complete a strategic plan, I think will help us really shape and re-envision the future versus is, you kind of dip, you know, just kind of dabbling at what we, with the current model is. So I think that's a very interesting point, and, and one thing I would say on this, because I've had conversations with legislators, there's a, there's a kind of a trust issue here because if they don't measure it, they assume it doesn't happen. Okay? And so it's kind of an interesting kind of new dynamic that's occurring within, because in, to some extent, there's a vacuum being created. And so I think we do have an opportunity moving forward with where the vacuum exists to kind of fill in with something that's much more forward-thinking.
And I think you were at the meeting with Steve Staples and the board, and I think that that's exactly right, that there are those on the state board that fear if we take away a measure, we will stop teaching it. And as opposed to creating the opportunity for new ways to measure, to talk about learning. And so the trust piece there is that we've got some people that can't picture it any way than it's been for the last 10 years. But with, with Steve Staples and the, Steve gets it, I think we have the best opportunity.
I, I think there's, one other piece of it is that there's a timing issue, is that a thorough, robust conversation about the SOLs takes time. It's not going to happen within a month or two or three months or even a year. There's a lot of moving pieces, there's a lot of changes that could possibly be made. But then you also have the more artificial constraints of, well, you've got an upcoming legislation session, and the legislators on the SOL Innovation Committee want something that they can take to the General Assembly to discuss. Of necessity, you can't have that broad blow-it-up, start-over kind of conversation. It has to be concrete, it has to be attached to things that are already there, which complicates things because I think the vision is to have that broader conversation, but to figure out a way to do it with these artificial deadlines that are set out there.
One important thing, and you may hear from your principals, Dr. Lockard and I are working with the All County Principal Meeting next month to say, let's be involved in the process, let's have teachers be involved in the process. But you have a range of teachers and principals, one who says, I want to be involved, and the other says, tell me what to do and I'll do it. So we're using this opportunity to let teachers and administrators work the process, but that creates messiness. And so I think we should engage in that, but that does make some people nervous. So it's that tension that Dr. Garza described.
Sure, sure. Thank you. Thank you very much. So last question, it's on the standards of quality funding. And we, you do mention that a few times in here, which I think is great. On page 17, you talk about SOQ-related input costs and, and asking for a comprehensive empirical study, right? An assessment of the accuracy with which the state measures local SOQ-related input costs. And I guess the difference between SOQs, maybe with, with the LCI, whenever you talk about that, you are, you know, by its nature, it pits districts against each other, right? Just by its nature, because, right? With the SOQs, though, the standards of quality funding, we have an opportunity to talk about that as an adequacy issue, right? Was across the board. In every district in the state, every district is having to pay, to spend more for the, the standards of quality than what they're getting from the state. So there's this argument that they're underfunded, SOQs are underfunded across the board. So I wonder, and, and as I'm talking about this with my state legislators, one of the questions I'm getting is, can, can they, can I give them some kind of an estimate of, you know, how much is the underfunding of the SOQs costing Fairfax County? And how much maybe is it costing other districts? I'm not quite sure exactly what I'm asking for, but if we can say, this standard of quality is underfunded everywhere, and if it were funded where it's supposed to be, then Fairfax kind of would be getting this much more money. So kind of a bottom line?
There, there are measures on, on, on individual issues. There, there have been, there at least have been measures. I don't know if they've been necessarily updated. ESL, the ESL staffing standard is the one that I always come back to, but it's the one that's always in, in the front of my mind because it's the most concrete in terms of how the state funds versus how localities do it. That's something that's relatively easy to calculate. And then also J-LARC, the Joint Legislative Audit Review Commission, they do an annual report of SOQ spending, and they do an annual measure of how far above and beyond school divisions go. And they do it division by division, they measure all across, they basically say, here's what the SOQ minimum is, here's what each individual school division does. I, I don't want to misquote a number, but there is a very significant disconnect between what school divisions spend and what the state funds in terms of the, of the numbers. And it's true across the board. There are very few, there are very few jurisdictions that are at SOQ minimums or even close to SOQ minimums. Most are fairly substantially above.
So could we then, without a lot of trouble, put together for our legislators, you know, here's the amount of money that is kind of due and owing to Fairfax County for fully funding the SOQs? I mean, is that possible?
Very extensive.
I, I don't know. I don't know. Michael, you'd be probably the best to answer that. I, I think it gets to the, I think a more fundamental question is the current, you know, current SOQs is again, our current constraint, right? About how they, they tell us how we have to staff our schools versus holding us accountable for outcomes and then sharing. You know, what is the state, what's appropriate state share of educating children in this state? And I think that's a fundamental question because the state share is very low for us. So it goes to the adequacy, right? If you're saying these are the standards for success and the graduation standards here, then I think they should pay, you know, should be a share.
And Ms. Hines, you know, the, the easy one I use, it's not SOQs, but it is state mandates. It's 100 million that we're paying each year in unfunded state mandates. So that's an easy one to remember. So Ms. Strauss has a really quick comment on that, and then I'm going to Ms. Reed.
Right, two things. Back after the last major J-LARC study 10 years ago, there was a lawsuit brought by a, a collection of, of school divisions, and we lost because the, the final ruling was that when you talk about adequacy of funding, it was adequacy is determined by the state constitution, is determined by the SOQ, which is determined by the General Assembly. So if the code defines adequacy in a certain way, and so it's, it's a circular issue. So you have, so we lost the last time we tried that. So sometimes the mandate and what we are spend, what we are, what is, what it is costing us to have to comply with mandates that are not funded, trying to get... that are not funded, trying to get at it through adequacy is very difficult in Virginia, unless you dramatically change the constitution of the code. We lost the last time we tried that. Then the other piece, just to comment again, as we try to create a very different look on assessments and all of the rest of that, having had an opportunity to talk with the State Board of Education and with some of those members over the years, as we attempt to make dramatic changes, part of the fear in the Commonwealth of Virginia is you have other very needy school divisions, failing school divisions, and have very few resources, and their kids are in huge need. Their local concern is that something that we may be able to make work up here. The fear is that we will create even larger learning gaps in the mountains of Virginia, in the coal mining areas in southwest Virginia. So politically, when we can make something work here, part of it is that, part of the negotiating is that we have to create an environment that does not make it worse, or let other school divisions and leave more children behind, because there's always the fear that we will somehow move our children forward, all of our children, in closing the achievement gap. But somehow, we will, there is, there is the lack of faith that they let us go and let us be more flexible. They can't envision how that won't make things even worse and horrible for children in other parts of the state, because there's such huge variation in school divisions. So that's part of, as we try to go forward, that's part of the political discussion.
And we've had that discussion quite a bit, and I think it's looking at a differentiated model.
Yeah.
Being clear about the standards, and those that meet the standards, let them fly. It's the same thing we've talked about within our own system, right?
Right.
We don't have, even within our 196 schools, the needs are very different, right, and support looks different. But it is, that's the conversation. I have been very impressed with the State Board, and because the five tests that were eliminated, initially the conversation was, now you have to develop tests, and we were just doing that same circle. And I think the conversation started to shift around performance-based assessments and more authentic assessments, which is very affirming. So I think it just takes lots of conversations.
It does, exactly. And we just have to be cognizant of sort of the broader pieces that motivate the whole state.
Okay, so next we have Ms. Reed.
Mr. McElveen, are we going to be talking about our priorities next?
Yeah, that's the next discussion.
Okay, and that's really what I wanted to focus on. I have a meeting tomorrow afternoon with a legislator who has asked for some input and ideas. So that's wonderful, but I really would like to get a sense of the Board as to what-
Yeah, that's the goal.
Yeah.
If we can get that.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. McLaughlin, and I do want to preempt what Ms. McLaughlin, I'm pretty sure she's going to bring up, is in addition to, or an amendment to our legislative program. Just so you know, we need to get these as soon as possible. I did send out an email as a reminder, so we can get it worked up in advance. So if you have any ideas that aren't brought today, please bring them to Mr. Malloy at my attention. So, thanks.
Thank you. I just wanted to remind my colleagues, you've heard me speak about this frequently, and I just sent you an email with the Washington Post, August 2013 editorial, where they powerfully urged the Virginia General Assembly to revise their religious exemption law. Just to clarify for all of you, we are the only state in the Union that completely exempts our families of any legal obligation to educate their children. The only state in the Union. And this affects over 7,000 Virginia students a year, at minimum. The goal of the Washington Post editorial, the one that Mr. McElveen and I heard at a VSBA conference, where the University of Virginia law professor spoke so eloquently, is we very simply have the General Assembly say, as with our homeschool students, there are going to be some requirements that you adhere to the homeschool instruction laws, so that we are ensuring that these children are going to receive some sort of education. And if you read that Post editorial, in my mind, it beautifully captures how important this is, and it troubles me that it's not in our legislative package when I look through it. And our state legislators are going to say, if Fairfax County, the largest in the system, which means over 1,000 kids a year annually, are going without any protective measures at all to make sure they're getting an education of any kind, then how are they supposed to take up the mantle? So it is something that I'm going to work with Michael and with Mr. McElveen on, to make sure, you know, the language is appropriate. But I really think this is, the time has come, that we, as the largest school system, need to lead on this. 7,000-plus children a year are impacted by this, and to be the only state in the Union with nothing, I think is shameful at minimum. So that's my one thing. And the second question I had, Mr. Malloy, real quick, is, is there going to be anything in our legislative package that's going to address unaccompanied minors? And I say that because Virginia is the fifth-largest state in the United States with unaccompanied minors. We are behind Texas, California, Florida, and New York. Fairfax County, no surprise, is then the largest jurisdiction within Virginia, but we're the second-largest school system in the entire United States that has the number of unaccompanied minors. And so, some may be aware that the Board of Supervisors were wanting to go ask the federal government for 14 million in funding for those 1,000 students. But I would say, you know, we also need to go to the Virginia General Assembly and say, hey, you know, we disproportionately have the number of unaccompanied minors in our school system, and state funding is state funding. So if we need the General Assembly to then go lobby the federal government too, for emergency funds for this, that's fine. But I think we need to be really looking at local, state, and federal advocacy on behalf of Fairfax County and the Commonwealth of Virginia, because we are being disproportionately affected by the costs that come with absorbing these students. And I think it's, again, wanted to put that on the table. Those are the two things that, in my mind, are very time-sensitive.
Okay, so for next steps for that one, please reach out to us by Friday. We've heard that, so I think, Michael, you can go ahead and probably start formulating.
Well, yeah, I wanted to, one real quick update is that, actually during the last General Assembly session, Delegate Tom Rust proposed a study of the religious exemption. Wasn't successful, but he did propose a study that we look at, kind of the difference between what Virginia does in terms of that exemption versus what other states do. It wasn't adopted by the General Assembly, but it was, it was proposed by at least one of our, and it was from a legislator from this area. So.
Right. I'll go offline and work with you, but it was my understanding, it was Rust and also Vivian Watts, who's over in my neck of the woods. But we do need to do something.
Okay, Ms. Hines, you have a real quick go back.
Real quick go back, yes, thank you. I just wanted to respond a little bit to Ms. Strauss on the question of, you know, whether adequate funding of the standards of quality is something that we want to go over at the statewide level. And I just wanted to make sure that, you know, I hear you saying that it's been tried before and it wasn't successful. But since 19, and I am not advocating that we take the state to court right here, right now, because obviously, that's complex, and there are potential consequences that, you know, we can't even foresee at this point. But I just would point out, that actually since 1973, 45 states have been sued by localities for inadequate funding, or inequitable funding of their, of their school systems. And many successfully, right now, 10 states are currently being sued, including Texas. And just as an example, the state won a lawsuit in 2005 against Texas, but the localities have sued again, and they are currently winning right now in this latest round. So I think that, again, I'm not advocating that we do it, but I just think we want to be careful not to go publicly saying it's not on the table, because it might not work.
You have to change the code.
I don't think, I'm not sure that we do. So you and I should probably take that offline. But I do think, if we thought about it, we would have to get legal advice, right, you know, definitely.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hines. So at this point, Michael, can you speed read the document, the update on our priorities from last year?
Well, actually, it's quite handy, because added to your agenda was a one-page document. What I did was, I went through your five priorities you had adopted at a forum last year. Those were reinvest in K-12 education, so obviously, education funding piece, invest in early childhood education, roll back the 2013 education reform agenda, which, to remind you, included A to F grading of individual schools, and the state's Opportunity Education Institution, which entailed state takeovers of persistently failing schools, reform standards of learning assessments, and then also prevent new mandates. So those are your five kind of baseline, or your five priority positions. The document that you have in, on your agenda item, just goes through a little bit of what happened with each one of those. To give you the 30-million-foot view, not even 30,000-foot view, from our perspective, reinvest in K-12 education probably went the wrong way, because we lost the, we had the final elimination of support cost of competing. The rest of re-benchmarking stayed pretty much intact. That may not be the case coming, coming to FY16. Early childhood education, there wasn't a lot in the way of legislative action on that issue. There were the creation, the governor created the Children's Cabinet, and the Commonwealth Council on Early Childhood Success, and the Commission on Youth, which is a General Assembly Legislative Committee, created the Early Childhood Education Work Group on Quality. So there are ongoing discussions on early childhood. They haven't resulted in anything, but there are ongoing discussions. In terms of A to F and OEI, A to F was delayed by the General Assembly by two years. They've put it off. They've actually asked the State Board to go back and look at the criteria, look at whether it should be a single grade, whether it should be multiple grades. Bottom line is that it's delayed for two years, but it still does exist, and at the trajectory they're going, the first grades would be issued by the state by October 1st, 2016. So that's still, it's delayed, but still there. OEI is a little bit more complicated. There was a lawsuit about whether or not the state could actually take over individual schools. At the first, first, first court hearing, it was deemed to be unconstitutional. The governor and the Attorney General have both said that they're not going to appeal that ruling, but in a quirk, the OEI Board technically still exists, because it's still in code. So the OEI Board is exploring whether or not it can file an appeal of that ruling. So while right now, OEI isn't, isn't really in force, there is a possibility that the OEI Board itself could, could come back with that. SOL assessments, we've gone through that discussion. There's been a lot of talk about it. Most of the focus is at the elementary level. I think that going into the next session, you're going to see more of a focus on the secondary level. And then preventing new mandates, we had the one, the discussion a little bit about the governor's task force, which, again, I mentioned, hasn't yet met this year. And then, you know, just the bottom line is, this General Assembly does still, still impose mandates, and I just picked one example. I do have to say, however, though, if you were to look at the total number of bills that passed, and total number of mandates, we probably had fewer mandates come to us last year than we have in years past. There wasn't as, as broad a discussion about some of those issues. So those are your five, and kind of the status of what the five, as they exist right now.
Okay, great. Thanks, Michael. So let's go ahead and keep that document up there. And I do, just in my conversations with Michael, well, first, let me say, you know, there's been a long enough conversation at the table today about making sure our legislators know what our priorities are. That's the purpose of this document. And in past years, the Board has acted on this separately, through forum. But this year, I think it's Michael's desire, my desire, to include this as the front page of our legislative program. So you open it, that's what you see. It's not a separate document. It's an integral part of the thing. So that's our goal for this year. Hopefully, that'll address those concerns. When looking at these priorities, every year, we have a discussion about how many we want. I think we've always gone from the range, in the range from three to six. But at this point, I think it would be good for the Board to have that discussion. And in speaking with Michael, there are probably four issues that we want to keep up here. As you heard him say, A to F, OEI, the reform agenda, a lot of that's died, or has been pushed back. So that's less of a front burner this year. But obviously, funding is always an issue. We always want that to be upfront. SOL reform, those ongoing discussions, the quote, pathways to graduation, work that we're doing in terms of different requirements for graduation, that's, that's a front burner, I think. Mandates continue to be a front burner, as does early childhood education. So that gives you kind of four to look at. I want you to think about that a little, and give me an idea where you're sitting in terms of if you want to reduce that further to three, or if you want to expand, you want to stick with those four, you want to add more to it. So now is the time for that discussion. Again, keep it very brief. Ms. Evans?
I think this is a good list. I don't think we have to cut it, the numbers back. I think that as long as it sticks with five or even six, we're fine. I would agree with you about eliminating the OEI. I disagree with you, or, you know, about the A through F. I think that even though they have delayed it two years, October of 2016 will be here before we know it. I think that it is critical that we keep in our, our strong support for eliminating that in this, in this year. If they just delay it, then they'll be spending a lot of time on figuring out how to implement. So I think we really need to be hitting hard on eliminating that A through F, because it's so destructive.
Okay, thanks. That's been noted. Anyone else? Ms. Strauss?
I would see, again, as the top, continued SOL reform and the pathways to graduation, and then obviously, dealing with money. But I would assume the different pathways to graduation would be folded into the SOL reform, because I think that's critical-
Correct.
-that we really move.
Correct.
So I support the four that you identified, and then the question, is there anything else we add on to it? And you've now heard my concerns about what I'd like to add to our legislative package on unaccompanied minors and the religious exemption. What I'm struggling with, though, with these, especially like funding or mandates, they're very macro-level. And I just, if I were a state legislator, honestly, my eyes would glaze over and go, whatever. I mean, I really would like to see something, again, that is more impactful, time-sensitive. What do we know that they're going into this legislative session, trying to do, that, you know, we want to have a voice on? And so that's why I'm a little worried about where, what this looks like right now. Early childhood education, to me, is very specific. I mean, yes, there's things from underneath it, but that one is tangible, it's real, and it's both state and national. But SOL reform, I mean, they're working on that now, and I don't know that we can get much further. So I'm just kind of almost wondering if we need this to be sort of like action item one, and then issues that, you know, FCPS continues to monitor and care about. And so you've almost got like two different groups there on that front page, and one is, we're following the SOL reform, you know, we're following the mandates, we're following funding of K-12 education. But then let's elevate at the top, specific things like early childhood education, where we're saying, we want you guys to do something about this.
So normally, what we'll do, and then I'll let Michael expand on this, is, under each of these, we'll put very specific action items. So, Michael, you might be able to give some examples.
Yeah, I was actually going to say exactly that. If, I redid this document to pull out the original bullets that were underneath each one of your priority positions. Those bullets were more specific things you were interested in, because remember, this, this document derives from your entire program. So anything in your program can be transported into this. So if there are specific issues, so under reinvest in K-12 education, again, going back to my favorite topic, because for whatever reason, I can't get it out of my head, if you want to talk about additional funding for students, for English language learners, that can become your sub-bullet underneath that. And then that gives a specific action item to a specific legislator, to either put in a budget amendment or a piece of legislation. And a lot of these other issues that you've been talking about can easily fit under these topics as specific action items under the broad aegis of funding or SOL reform, or pathways to graduation.
Okay. I see that as getting us closer to what I'd like to have done.
Okay. And as the process goes, feel free to speak with me more about that. Anyone else on number of priorities, content of priorities? Ms. Reed?
I agree with what Ms. McLaughlin just said. The ones that are very generic, I think we could probably be more impactful if we could come up with something very specific to say. And in that regard, I wanted to throw out whether we might, for example, suggest some kind of a pilot program, or a waiver from requirements, and, you know, instead of doing this, let us do that, kind of a thing. Since we're supposed to be the leaders here, I feel like we should be trying to lead by coming up with some very specific suggestions. So that would be one thing that I would throw out there. And then- And then something that Ms. Schultz said about the criteria, how would we come up with these, the topics that are the highest priorities? Is it the ones that have the biggest potential impact? And I would also argue the ones that are feasible. I mean, I think if you keep asking for things that are the moon, you're never going to get the moon, I don't think. But if you, you know, maybe there's specific asks that we could get, like under reinvest in K through 12 education, you know, maybe it's a specific ask about provide funding for unaccompanied minors and, you know, immigrants, or something like that. I'm just throwing this out as an example. But I do like the idea also of giving them the reality check of what's happening here and what the impacts are, and some of the new things that have happened in our communities that are impacting our ability to use our resources.
Okay, Ms. Schultz?
So this harkens back to the previous comment I had on the other, which is delimiting our focus and being strategic about the ask. In anything, the ask is what's important. And if we are broad-spectrum in our approach, they're not going to know where to direct a response to a broad-spectrum ask. You have to be specific. If you are in sales, you know, if you are closing a deal, if you are negotiating for a pay increase for a job, if you're talking about an applicant, whatever it is, it has to be specific. And so I think that we have to figure out what it is that we wish to be strategic about. If we want funding for a particular thing, or funding of a certain amount, or LCI adjustment, one of the items I handed off to Dr. Garza was, you know, Michael, you had mentioned earlier, we're adding, you know, school divisions, the size of, you know, other school divisions. We should have an attachment to this that lists the size of every single school division in descending order or ascending order throughout the Commonwealth, and then show our growth over the last five or six years. And show, you funded them this for their size of their school district. This is what we're asking for. And be specific, and relate it to something that's tangible, so that it sort of takes away that, Pat, as you were mentioning, you know, the school division against school division, but there is a clarity to the ask, which is, we've added a Dinwiddie, we've added a half of a Henrico, we've added a, you know, a fourth of a whatever, or we've added all 17 of these school divisions, you know, totaled this, that's what we've added in the last five years. So that there's a discreet, specific understanding of the situation that we're in, and doesn't pit us against anybody else, but explains it and then says, you as a legislator are being asked to do these things on our behalf.
Thanks, Mrs. Schultz. So what I'm going to ask at this point is, taking that, all those comments, I think we'll work with the idea of four to five priorities. Michael and I will get together and see if we can be as specific as possible in our asks. And then potentially what we'll do, because I do want everyone to have a chance to see what we come up with, probably bring it to a forum for discussion at that point, which is what we did last year, and get any feedback at that point, and then bring it for new business along, subsumed within our legislative program. So if everyone's okay with that, you will have another opportunity to weigh in. We can move forward from there, okay? Thank you all. And apologies to the audit staff that's waiting. So Pam, you want to pull up next steps? I believe the next, main next step is just if you have any amendments, get, yeah, yeah, get amendments to us as soon as possible, but the drop-dead deadline for new stuff is going to be October 17th, I believe Pam said. So that gives staff time to work on them.
October 17th?
Yeah.
And then we also have the briefing.
Right, yeah. So let's... Okay, yeah, so update on the SOL Innovation Committee, which will be up to the chair, finalizing the list of priorities, draft amendments to us by October 17th, and then this will be scheduled for new business on October 23rd. Okay? Thank you.